Hi, could you guys?
Oh.
That's loud. Okay.
Yes, you're coming through.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let me try.
Howard, I'm gonna get back in.
Hold on, don't go back in. Um. Let's see, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, you're coming through clearly.
Okay. We might have to do it just with my phone and not your computer.
Well, let's see.
Yes.
It's gonna do the feedback, but hold on.
Correct.
Is there any public objection to what I'm doing here? If not, I'll take a motion to the ones in the higher who involve the public. So. But I mean, anything in motion to?
Oh.
You want to approve it, you want to pay it?
I'll motion that we approve. Um, I'll make a motion. I don't see this often, so I never know how to say it. Okay, I would like to make a motion that case number twenty four dash zero one nine. I'm gonna say your name wrong. I'm sorry, Harris Smith, conditional use permit application. Um, for one sixty nine Buick Lane map, oh, twenty two lot double O seven. Um, to put a concrete foundation under an existing twenty by thirty two foot seasonal summer camp in the public water zone. Um, be approved.
And can you find out that those things are on?
Yes, with the conditions that you, where is it at? This is why I don't want to give nations.
These suggested conditions, including those below that you and Don?
Okay, that we would like.
What does it say?
Reimpression of.
Oh.
No, please do.
As the erosion control, of course, we expect the silt fence to be properly installed. And I guess I'm gonna do that as before it freezes. And in addition to that, uh. Also using bail, hay bales.
You said shrubs.
And yeah, uh, as far as the shrubs, uh, we'd like to see more impervious area. Or pervious area eliminated, whatever you can do with the grass or at least some shrubs along the lake bank there to kind of form a barrier. And then we've asked for as-built drawings when the project's.
Jamie added a tree.
Yes, please replant the tree that does need to come down.
It does the summary.
That.
Brian Shaw. Sky. All better. Oh. Oh.
Just moving forward, I would make a recommendation if the board is in fact comfortable with the draft findings. Um, or as revised, you, the motion could be to adopt the findings. And then whether or without conditions, however that looks. Of course, but of course, you'd be adopting this, you'd be to make sure that in fact, this is accurate.
So what we need to do?
So for the future applications, uh, if you could, some whoever made a motion, should you choose to go in this direction, uh, make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law, which. With conditions or deny, depending what, yeah.
But that over tall yet.
Correct. And, and as amended, so there's suggested conditions of approval, so you may have corrections to the facts, or you want to strike a condition or amended or add a condition, so it's, that's the base, and then. You don't, but um, I just want to make sure it's easier moving forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the, the reviewer today. And your site.
Yeah.
There you go. Well, I have a little bit along. Thank you. Right next time you come there is, uh, your wall record camera, um, that one today.
Patrick Densford of the Architectural Project, and I'm thirty seven, eight seven. I'm also here tonight with Jeff Basin is the executive director of White Canyon. Uh, there were four items that that applicant question asked us to review. The potential with elevation certificate, uh, we provided that in your packet. As you read that, it says that we can have our basement, um, hundred and seventy six feet. I've set the basement at a hundred and seventy one. So which is, brings us to the second issue, which was there a discussion that we could have a slabbing basement? And now that we have the elevation certificate, I said that. At floor level, one to a foot of the people's requirement. We didn't concrete. The third item was the building pipe, we loaded the building as less than twenty feet. And then the final issue was you were looking for more details on the rain garden. And that information provided on sheet A three point two. Does that, anything else? Thirty four items. We are very long.
No, I, I want to just make sure that you do attempt to take public input at some point, and Jamie has indicated that she thinks that she can do that with her phone, because this is still not working.
Uh, no.
Well, again, on this one, I think we, as far as the erosion control. What are you planning there, silt fence?
Yeah, they're talking about the thing.
Yeah.
In the details of how to.
Are you including hay bale also? Hay bales also?
Uh, whatever the page is. I have to look at the page, but I specify, I don't know if we can use the silt fence if you put down four.
I think we like to see hay bales. In addition.
You want silt fence here?
Yeah, I just see silt fence.
Silt fence needs to be part of.
Yeah, but.
You care about, but we'll put hay bales up.
Okay. Uh, I don't know, vegetation there, probably could use a little more, uh. Vegetation is pretty.
But we, we're addressing about the storm art to, to, to the rain garden.
Yeah, I understand, but, uh.
I'm sure, I'm sure the white can't.
What's that?
I'm sure why can't you make some, some, some brass.
I, I think that would be a good idea. We're trying to do whatever we can. Uh, I know you're catching the rainwater, there's still gonna be water going down there. Whatever we can to protect the lakes, what we're. Charged with, and I think that would be a good idea. And as with the other one, we'd like to see some as-built drawings when you're done. Again, if they're the same, you don't change anything, that's fine, just.
I'm sorry, what's the as-built drawings?
As-built.
The project that is built.
Yeah. As you build, what's it look like? Would it look, is it the same as the drawings you provided us? Or has it changed a little bit?
It could be a red line of, of.
Yeah, I was gonna say. There's a question, red drawing and, and so. You've got to watch your comments. Red drawing will be red line, so.
Yeah. Yeah. That's. No, that's fine. We just want to see what it looks like after you build it.
Hmm.
It doesn't have to be a elaborate, marked up drawing.
That part of the script on.
Pardon me?
It is for the kid.
Yeah.
With, which part requiring asphalt or red lining? It's, it's not, but it's a condition that is working now. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it. Ready?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, uh, sheet A one. Uh, the proposed building overlaid on the existing building, maybe it's just scale of this, maybe it's just my eye, look like. Lineup of proposed deck is further than line. Same thought, sorry, you know, I can post. On your, do you have a sense of where Brownland even is at?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a sense of where Brownland even is at?
Yeah. We're, we're, uh, uh. We're not. Your foundation will be down, but.
Yeah.
The basement is at, at basically a break.
Looking at your rain gardens, uh, if you're excavating a foot down into different material in there. I'm wondering if you're gonna cut down into water.
Is it, I don't think, I got a project just right up next to my house, you didn't turn whatever there, so I forced it. And it's about the same distances as this project, I don't, I don't see a significant. Thank you. Well, this is ready to talk about the public, the, the chapter we named, will be.
Uh, after you've finished asking questions of the applicant, if you completed that, to see if there's any public here or online.
Okay, so any, any input or questions on the project?
Hi, that's it, that's if you guys have any questions, if you wanted to comment on this. You can unmute and go right ahead. You can unmute and go right ahead. I'm gonna take that as everybody is okay.
All right, I'll send, I think motion to, uh, both of the, uh, here, please.
Yeah, I'll motion. Motion that, uh. Uh, case number twenty-four dash zero twenty. The state Young Men's Christian Associations. Uh, conditional use permit to replace a building staff housing. With a new building utilizing the one-time allowance for thirty percent advantage, but not component structure of the shore land behind this country.
I'll second that.
All favor? All vote? Okay, you have the, please. Yeah, um, you put on the, uh, issue to move further. And public, any questions, no public, yeah?
Any input, public? Public Zoom people? Nope.
Again, motion to approve.
Don't make me do it again.
I'll make a motion. Uh. Case number twenty-four dash zero twenty, three twelve Winthrop Center Road, map six lot sixty. Uh, conditional use permit to replace a building for staff housing with a new building. Utilizing one-time allowance for a thirty percent expansion of a non-conforming structure. In the shore land zone. Be approved. Contingent on, uh, of extra erosion control using hay bales. Uh, some vegetation, planting, maybe some shrubs to break up the. Flow to the, to the, uh, lake, and then as-built drawings, as we discussed, just mark up.
Correct.
Yep.
We should be approved.
I'll second that.
Three, seven. Any further discussion? All favor? Vote. Vote. Thank you.
Go, Phil. Well, I'm sorry. Can we come down and see it again when we get it done? Nice area down there, I like that.
All did, we didn't see what you actually do on that one.
Yeah.
That was the add, what is the term you want to use?
Uh, to adopt the findings, so basically, and I, I had a different time to put motions in. Um, and I will do that again, because it can be awkward. But it's, it's to adopt the findings, and the findings are basically saying, here's all the facts. Um, and we conclude that it does or does not meet the requirements of the ordinance, because those are spelled out. And then with or without conditions, and I have suggested conditions.
Is that on motion? Is that on motion?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Are you ready to move? For what?
To adopt the finding.
Just adopt the finding.
Motion for, motion for, motion.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Well, we'll add that.
We'll add the. Findings that we talked about.
Thank you so much.
All favor?
I guess.
With their shirt out. There.
All favor? Fair, tell them.
Yeah.
All favor, all vote?
Oh.
I, I haven't had a chance to review the, no. Quite honestly, I certainly do that extra kind of one, one. Good conscience, I haven't read it in a month.
Oh, they updated the red line, the red mark, okay, yeah, so you can't really search it if it's factual.
Oy.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay, do we have any findings for the next one?
Finding, what, wall, plan?
Yeah.
Geez, that one's really close.
First one, yeah, were there findings for this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a finding.
You guys, remind, this is one we saw already, right?
Yes, and then, yes, okay. There are draft findings, and again, they're redlined, so.
Yeah.
But so the, so the amendments, the red parts, you have not seen before tonight, as Grant has noted.
Just a little.
How, there is, if there was a finding in front of you when you came this evening. Correct. Yep, yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, heading the way to care.
Andy, Doug, Art, thanks for standing in for me there. And, uh, this project came to you before, really, okay. Okay, uh, yeah, this project came to you before, um, as a remodel. And reposting underneath. And since then, um, they've decided to do a, um, a, a total tear down, rebuild. And to go back and full foundation. Um, and. So. Just a little. Yes.
I pulled it up also, Andy, on the big screen, if that's helpful.
For now. Sorry. For it up. Oh.
There you go. There.
It, it, it. Very nice. So. Uh, what we see out lines. Here in orange is the proposed structure. Um, underneath it, you can still see, um, the, the prior structure that was there. Uh, the prior structure, it's given to the old beach, our watermark. And the proposed structure is definitely fully behind the twenty-five foot. Um. Set back for high water, but it, line that through on this copy with yellow. So you get that on the plans, you also have the seventy-five and the hundred on your plans. The dribble well, it's been installed recently. And they also own two bagwads. This one will be here, this, a lot of them that the folks previously approved. And the other one is being used for the suffixes, sorry. And so the suffixes that are passing, designed, approved, and installed. Um, and then I guess the stuff that. Over a hundred and fifty feet from the way. And that. This is ten scale, so if you can see, we've also got a hundred foot setback, but it will drop. The, uh. The. Instead of have, um. A waste man. And, um, the utility area. This, this part of the basement, this part's gonna be living area, this identified on the architect's plans. As to the, the different rooms are. Um, we got, we got a subject system. Where the size to serve four bedrooms. The proposed side, he's gonna have a master bed and another body, not on the first floor. And down. In this, therefore, you have the top room and the basement. There, so. Funny, funny, it's a capability. Actually, that's, that's capable, by at least, and then. It's like a bunk, doesn't. Uh, need as, as big a floor number as a room. So, definitely, you should, they are. Um. The. If you can see by the architectural elevations, this is a flat roof, somewhere that was there now. With the eye on the lake ends, sort of that. And, um, we thought a little more. Um, designing, and easily adhere, I guess, up to the folks about it. It's like, I mean, we're gonna put, um. We've built pretty soon. Perpetual, there was a detail for that on the plan. Uh, it's all on the stone, and make sure it break the energy. And that's gonna go down through, um, soil, everything. And then it's gonna go into another stone layer. And there'll be, uh, parts that come around each side of the building. Uh, and stay there, stay away. At the upper end of these, uh, crushed stone, um, punch pools. They've been. Well, this show you before, it was deep, and then it was now who goes back as well. Uh, the, that was in. And the, well, finally, told me to walk. Uh. No, June, um. Private extensions. Existing ones, including, but that becomes the answer. And there's two there, right, you see all these designs. Probably to go around with your door, and you should just propose on this end. And then. It's that, that. Moving the bit, it's also to be controlled by. It is the, it's taking both the nice, the full foundation. And then. The other aspect is true removal. It's out running, that's just the time. And it's that. And we identify thirteen trees. So, um, that includes, uh, that. And the rest, we were even like, uh, the building itself, the construction, the building itself. For access to get down to do the work on the zone. And so we was out there with Mark Austin on. And identified those thirteen trees. And Marcus did a reading for those three appropriate trees to be removed for the, for the project. And they've also spent, that it's gonna be thirteen, eighteen trees. And then there're gonna be species, several of them, but each tree is death.
That's the fact.
It is pretty, what it is, okay.
Yeah. This is United.
That was something that.
Yeah. So they can't move it back any further, really.
I'm concerned that there's not a lot of, of, of.
Yes, it's that, more.
I can't roll it, because it's too.
After the right construction, desire for the.
Yeah.
That right near the.
Target. The, the ultimate, the end of the, to invest. Available to be in, in planning those trees. And then. That's essentially what it is, um. It's gonna be. Under twenty feet. At the highest point of the building. And that's, you know, according to the D E P, we're on the, in check, and we'll take the. Lowest grade on the downhill side. Or the average grade on the downhill side. And come up from that elevation to the, the highest point on the building. It's moving, uh, the tennis, the tennis. And so this one. We're like, yeah. Probably slept in, it's completely high. Like this, with that, I'm ready to address any. I want to hear some sort of concerns.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for the presentation. So you can go ahead and do the, even chapter one thousand. So.
That's shore land zone. That is pretty reliable, then.
Yeah. That's. But, uh. Um, yeah, you gotta, yeah, use that whole probably more than any other word that's in our office. Okay. Yeah, a lot of that. Uh. So I think the last time. L B presented for the applicant, the concerns of support that had to offer, I hadn't built in proximity to the lake and. Hope all time, uh, which I said you provide additional detail on, I appreciate that. We received some public comment today from, from individual, uh, the reference, E P chapter one thousand, and when you can. Expand a non-conforming structure in the shoreline zone, and given that this is a tear down. Built over this, if it was a fireman's. To relocate the structure to be more, to be less non-conforming. If the cost could be more than fifty percent of the park value, the structure has. So I would say, would be a design. Cost of the new structure would exceed that fifty percent of whatever the park value is there.
Yes. Yes, and on, on this site. You really cannot move that. Um, this, this fold down on the back of the buildings, um, as you can see from the, from tours, yeah. Uh. The door, to move back into that's, really steep back, like the home building.
Showing a picture, I.
We're gonna need to, uh. Maintain a smaller. That's.
Yeah, a few of us didn't get to see it, so we're gonna go off, uh.
Go back to that same, though, Don.
Didn't look like it to us, because I think you'd do more damages. Got into that.
They, we, we talked about that. No more.
Okay.
And it looked like we would do more, by building, step back in that vein, and move it back, moving when we wanted to. That was our opinion. It kind of offed out, actually.
Yeah, when you're looking at it, it's, it's pretty steep and. Pretty good elevation temperature, you know.
Steps out to, I mean, yeah, right behind the building, steps right out, and so you, you remove a lot of soil. If you were focusing on a hundred percent of that. But I'm sure it's a little bit more dangerous, by, left it off.
Dylan, you have a sense, we have, our hands tied. If it, if it be said, it needs to be relocated.
I don't thi- I think it's only if, if you can. I don't think it's a required, absolutely has to.
It's one of those discretionary.
Right.
Areas that the board makes the determination, um. Your hands are not tied. So it's a matter of.
If it's at the board's discretion, and the certain. This is kind of a checklist of items that the board can consider in making that decision, okay?
Okay, I'll, I'll defer to you folks that were on saying.
Yeah, we.
We, we do, I mean, one of the priorities we have, depending on all three of these.
Yeah, I was gonna say all three of them, I looked at that. Things, just wasn't, that wasn't my.
We went, we went thinking, how could we do that?
Sorry.
We went there thinking, how could we do that, in all three cases? So. And that was a review of the site.
Yep.
That we, of how many offices, that maybe more damage. I'm doing that. And that, we, that. All that out.
Uh.
Okay, ready?
I'm all set.
I'm sorry, you're done. Yeah, time now.
What?
Oh, you're all set? What, are we in the?
We go until.
Ready to? Yeah, we're not through, for sure.
We're not done.
Okay. Oh, I got lost. Uh.
So if you present.
Yeah, now we're gonna accept it. We're not in the approval part, we're gonna accept it.
Okay.
Please, yeah, there's a word. Uh, no one, I noticed in this fact finding, it says, earthwork includes moving approximately. It had said four fifty, and then it said twenty-five cubic yards of material.
And it does continue to say both in the application, there was a, they were at odds, so.
There's, there's gotta be more than twenty-five cubic yards involved in this.
Uh-huh. Uh, doc, right?
Yeah. Uh, so. It's in excess of twenty-five cubic yards, I guess, it just says plus or minus. Okay. And again, uh, like these other ones, we would, we'd like to see as-built drawings. Or I guess that's too technical for. Or I guess that's too technical for our architectural friends, so a marked up drawing would be fine.
He can address the side.
And we. And in this case, it's it's pretty close to the lake. And this is going to be a lot of disturbance. And I think, again, we would require, we would ask forth just as so.
We we don't recommend self-punishes.
Be good.
In this case, we're proposing an erosion control vernor.
Okay.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, we've seen.
I don't like.
Too many useless.
So.
The bottom's flapping out in the wind.
The side of the silk fence is stable to.
The wrong way.
Downhill side.
I've seen a few, a couple places on my street there. They're not even. Into the ground. They're just sitting there and I was like, what the heck is that doing?
Probably digging a silk fence.
Yeah.
Doesn't work.
And I saw, I had some work done and they put they put the. Barrier in the ditch. They put a silk fence and the veils. It still got a little bit of soap, yes, because there was a ditch. So I, yeah, that's great then. And also, when they get done there, there's not much vegetation between the. House, the camp and the lake. Basically, not much in there. And this is again going to get disturbed, so. Hopefully, we can see some. Either some grass or some shrubs planted there. Uh, before the. The erosion berm goes.
Uh, that's. Not unreasonable.
Yeah.
I think we're in a situation like that. Grass really isn't the best.
Probably not looking at.
Some sort of shrubbage.
Yeah, just a.
I think they've worked well on that site.
Yeah, I I know on my, when I bought my house, they had the lawn mowed right now to the rip. Yeah, it's the holy crap. First of all, I want to pull it. But secondly, that cannot be good. And they were fertilizing the lawn.
Oh, gee.
Yeah. No. So anyway, I've I've planted a bunch of shrubs and I think really help. Look. And I don't have to mow twice. So. Yeah, that anything we can do to help. Because the water is great, especially on those lakes. That's all I.
Uh, I have nothing. No.
No.
I do not have a. Same folks, does anybody want to make any comments? You can unmute and I'll put you to the microphone. I know errors. Thank you.
Sure. Hello. How you doing? I'm Ted Haskell. I, uh, I own a property in Jason. Project. Helping on the lake. Fifty years, something years. I really enjoy that convenient. Uh, I'm totally in favor of this project. And I come at this project with a couple of different pains. I worked for the company that built the garage, the deconstruction. Which we did the garage. Then the subject system. Um, I believe we're going to be building the camp. So I personally would be involved with that on a on a company basis. But I'm. I'm in favor of this. I think it's going to improve this property. It's gonna. Obviously, build some wealth in my pocket because it's going to improve. Uh, the tax ways and finish my property. I am, I'm interested in protecting the lake. I like what Don has to say about, you know, initial protections. For the lake. You know, honestly. But sure that. Fifty years I've been here, it's. It's astounding how well it's been maintained. The. The folks in the property. I think care a lot about the lake and water quality. And I had a problem having a good things to say about it. And I look forward to it. Standing on their roof, people probably would break down my camp. So my high prescription is 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 not an issue for me. I I think this is going to be a good thing. Definitely have a bad. D E P does not. Approve or compare to these areas. And just another. Very yes. He got up. Nobody puts in that right. Doesn't have. Who cares before. So who was. Who called the road in there says. Yeah, with references is the answer. Uh, that is on the. I. You have my vote. Yes. Thank you. Any other comment? Your other thing of more here. Hopefully, our day is great. I'm. And that is come for that. You're a little hungry. Um, this is bond. If it was permanent, which we can do not. Probably control its own. Ninety five, we're on lane now zero two five, lock zero zero five. The. Conditions that we. Want to pull on the.
No, no, what they're doing is.
The berm is better.
Yeah, oh, that's better.
Replanting shrubbery. Oh.
No, we're trying to find a complete first.
We're doing a.
Yeah.
We have to do that before we do the.
Yeah. Correct.
So with the matter of case. Point four dash zero to zero and make a motion to, uh, accept the application process as complete. For a second.
I'll second.
Man.
Any other report? All better. All vote. Okay, we now want you to approve any other day. Of whole program.
The shots. You're cutting, uh, case twenty four dash zero to zero state. And, uh, sorry. Uh, case twenty four dash zero zero one, Richard Jones, Susan Bond. Indication is permanent application in Spain. We would not. We try to control it zone. Uh, ninety five, we're on lane now. Did it in five, one, zero, zero, five. Be approved and that we adopt the. Finance the fact here by.
And the theatrical.
And as well. You know, brought.
The shrubbery.
Chopped. The long additional. For problems.
Or as this gentleman pointed out, erosion control. I use my advantage in that's. Sweet network. For after the. Correction.
For a second.
One second.
Any other reports or? Checking questions? All better. Okay. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the visit. And that would be all.
All right, that's just enough light.
Yeah, yeah.
I walk that wood lawn every morning. Pretty dumb.
Gonna have to check for it, street name. Is it the one that had that used to be like a whole bunch of little? Happens and they were sold together and there's like an old tenant report that's up on the left?
I didn't notice that.
No.
Thank you.
All righty. What time is it?
Thank you.
Wait, is it really only eight o'clock? The efficiency. Oh. I like this. Well, what else are we doing? I lost track of the agenda.
Uh, there are some more things.
Oh, okay. Are you handing us more paperwork today?
No.
I was trying earlier to go through my book and I'm like, what don't I need anymore?
Um, we still have three folks on here. Yeah, well, I'll leave them running. Here. They cannot, they could if you wanted them to. I mean, my little phone camera. I could scan the room periodically every twenty seconds. They could hear us. Yeah.
We're here slightly. Follow my moving back.
Oh, Richard Jones says, I'm all set. Thank you. Good night. Good night, Richard Jones.
Uh, I'll find out what's going on, but that tablet. Was logged out. And I thought it normally that's how I get in. And so I think that was. Because it usually is doesn't.
Again, I bet you it's the year the town was founded. Because they use that in our, um. In the Wi-Fi cast.
Oh, they do. Yeah. Really? Yeah.
You're a, you're a change you handle.
Say that. No.
You don't understand anymore? I'm on there now. And then on you.
Is it like local access television or like a mainstream? Oh, oh, oh.
I think it's national syndicates.
Oh, really? And it's technology.
All.
Is it like Car Talk? Is it like, is it all serious or?
Thank you, Susan. Have a good night.
I will check that out.
We have one left that. Might listen.
What does it call again?
Yeah. Commando.
Oh. I think Kat left too. All right, so it's just me, but we'll leave it on as it's recording. It's still recording, at least. So that's good. I don't know how.
It's this is like a comedy very.
Yeah, I think when we're done, you're gonna, I mean, actually, you could probably do it now. Uh, no, it's not going to record this down. So we'll leave it on. And then at the end, you'll have to go on here and turn it off all the way. Because you didn't have the meeting for all. You just.
I did too, I think.
I don't know how.
Hold that out there. Stabilize.
Because it's still recording. You just left. It's still recording the meeting, but don't go back in because it's going to be. And then it won't record. At all.
And the other thing I'm with it is. Uh, show us.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Trees are fourteen to shut down. The vacuum made up of five. Humans, super humans, which is the black soil.
Yeah.
And grass. Uh, aggregate up to could be three point range. Uh, stone. The trees are still strong and gravel and sand. And that's all of that fourteen sets. We would divide wood. And chips. But you can't cook. By. So we would chip wood after we divide. We had to do two options. You would, you'd beat the wood against each other in the back of the car. Called the vacuum crumb. Then you chip the wood. And you made all. Cooked all out of the. The chips. And then we'd be the burn or we'll sell. The cost of part of that, the back is hugely hard. We're the hardest of the world we set in. And you drop the back. Beats the string back to the different sites. You could classify it. For different uses. And go all the way from string back. All the way to the viewers. Super humans is black soil like using a hard. It's a string back and everything else with it. You use soul control. When you look, when you lay this back down, we put the. Super humans gravel and sand in it.
Grit, um, usually use grits on. Slucing system there.
Right.
That's full of.
I'm surprised about the gravel and the rocks going up.
Pretty sharp.
Yeah.
Well, I did my bank, uh, I had the guy from D E P come over and he. Mine, it was pretty steep, so he recommended they mix more. A little more stone in and a little more grit.
So when you lay it down, spread it. Off of that, the Christian part of the. Fans. Okay, and it walk and wash. It's like a wooden fan. And then because it has a super unit in it. You throw grass seed in it. Throw some grass. State states use it for B O T. Will construct. If you're looking, see the slopes, you can spray out the grass with.
Yeah, yeah.
Fertilizer and all that stuff very. So now they grow up and they express. I have, I have applied it on. Donald Sand Back Hill for foundation. Sloes. Where I was silk fence all did run down, veil, pay all did run down to it. And neither drunk turtle or a bill up on. This thing you had to deal with. Because now it was all scanned. It was not on hill anymore down there. Slow control doesn't allow that. Okay, you're right. Why we didn't think of that though?
Yeah, when everybody's saying, well, we can't grow grass, so. I don't know.
I was thinking. My shooters. Uh, you did it in the middle. You even saw it. Ground crack. They were classified. They were sold all the way to the.
Waste.
Yeah. Fortunately, it burned a little bit.
And so it ended up in that. So. There's all like, oh, so I could burn it. So on top of writing the wood. You buy wood and chips. And we got it. So we have future, future rock.
Yeah. But yeah, I've got. Trees growing. I mean, I got trees, old trees, everything coming. One correction, Rick. One correct. They're not barking. They're debarking.
You buying?
Well, we always. We always call the park.
We always call back.
But they're actually don't put the bark on it.
Definitely approach your beach.
What's that?
That means we would go to each other.
Yeah. No, you're making chips when you go. Chipper. They're your. They're debarking.
Be able to run a paper mill. I'm be able to run a paper mill soon.
There you go.
Every time I see Rick, I learn more about it. Now you read that book too. Help me. So now you know that's what that's what like triggered me. Did you work in a pa- did you work in a paper mill? Oh, you both did? It's really interesting.
Oh, I started back in. Sixty nine.
Oh, didn't you say it was a J one? Is that where you work?
Yeah, it's like.
Did you guys know each other there? Were you like work buddies?
There we.
Oh, that's so cute. All right, there you go.
I was maintenance. We had to work. Not everybody agrees with that. Works better than.
Dog proof necessary.
Right.
Okay, we're on the line. Thank you for listening.
Oh, did we put the draft findings in that last? Yeah, oh, we did. Okay.
Okay, y'all.
I want to apologize for the lateness of. The sidewalks. I know that you weren't able to attend. And honestly, it. It was an error on my my part because I talked to the applicants about it because you all wanted to do it. And then I neglected to set it a day and time. So they are all. Prepared to. Um, but because you found out last minute, some of you weren't able to go, so I just want to apologize. For that.
A lot of people did that and. Best part was actually about. Told you the requirements, well, it's a shoreline knowing and moving to.
That was my plan when we got. We're going to figure out how to move these things back.
Yeah.
And we definitely had to change very obviously either. The case to the Y or which. Uh, just a lot of them. Case of Y. They were limited by the. Second means of eager, I mean, over the fire over basically. That was, that was that had by mind. And. A lot of mine. I was set back. Both stood right away to that one. And when you looked at it. That was a bad, like a biography, wasn't that, Steve?
Which one?
The Y.
No.
Oh, no, no.
They taped the last one. Again, we took one look at that bank and said, wow, that's a lot of work. We're gonna be more damage digging into that, trying to get that, go back.
Even photos sometimes, if they say, look at that slope, you don't see it unless you're.
No, the photo I took, you couldn't see the steepness, uh.
Oh, really?
You could see it was going up, but it, it was much steeper than what it looked in that picture, yeah.
There again. He didn't have a rule. Yeah, I went to that drainage field. Lakes out here, just some back issues over here, some reason kitty con and proper face self. And of course, after that happened, that's why it was drainage field.
There was a one there that they're tearing it down. Could it be done? Yeah. But they'd had to dig into that bank so much, they'd had to put a retaining wall. Or it would all wash.
So some business was very important.
They were.
So at, at the point, one or two time, one or two meetings that I was at early on, we had a representative, um, costing.
Oh, yeah.
Would it be advantageous to have him also reviewing applications for us? For us, but, but starting with.
Yeah, and I actually made a note to myself, there, it's unclear. Um, because I was submitting some to him. But they were residential and I, and I got the sense that he was really more to do like commercial and subdivisions and that. That really wasn't what their services were for, but I made a note to myself tonight to, to follow up with them and see. How to get some clarity around that and also because we're looking at amending the fee schedule, you all looked at that. And when they do those reviews, they have an hourly fee. Um, so somehow how to tie that all together.
Well, if you didn't read early on, I would make sure they got the agenda.
They did not get this agenda, I have not.
The best point, I don't know, I'll should not have them, at least get the agenda. And then they consider what's on here and maybe question.
I thought we talked about that once. But we still could notify him with the.
Say, yeah, we did, and I apologize, I have not.
We just need to go to practice, make sure we get the agenda, and if they had what, they're that long.
Well, if he's got, if he thinks there's something to help, he'll be here.
Yeah.
He usually shows up.
But he needs to know.
Yeah, he needs to get on it.
Is he on the email list for the notification for planning? I'm sure he is.
I'm not sure, but I will, I will send.
Yeah, he hasn't come in at all, in a very long time.
He was in when we were doing the mining.
Yeah. He used to come a bit more often.
He was doing a couple of big subdivisions at that time. I haven't talked to him recently, but I will make sure.
Subdivision issue, um, to do with.
Yes, yes.
They brought up that issue, that's how we found out. Made on my appearance issue, I do use, that those block not. That's why we ended up with that progress, because the bill.
Gotcha.
Um, but yeah, they were involved in that, and the miners. So, again, that was practically.
It's actually spelled out in the subdivision ordinance that there is a, it's not called the development review committee, but there's some committee, some entity that they identify. With fire, police, enforcement, I think the town manager is in there, so. My thought would be to. Build on there, so. I'll use that. And then loop everyone in. Well, a couple of different things, but um, you have a, said half filled out. Calendar. So these are the second and fourth Wednesdays of twenty twenty five.
I don't think I have.
Thank you.
Run a calendar.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I just want to be able to post online, now you go through. So the, the deadlines for, so what I'm posing here. Is that the first, the second, first meeting, which is the second Wednesday, be your regular development review, and I'll put a deadline that's twenty one days in advance. In that column after each meeting, and then we identify, we call right out that the others are workshops. Um, you could always continue an item from the first meeting to the second meeting, you know, it's already been noticed. So you don't have to make them wait a whole month, but if terms of materials coming in and the noticing. It'll leave you more times for workshops and it'll, it'll make it easier in terms of consistency to, to, you know, send your budget notice. And this and all that, so that, that's my request and suggestion.
Twenty seventh.
Yeah, we don't have a second meeting in November or December this year because of Christmas and Thanksgiving and. So next year, Thanksgiving is the twenty seventh.
I got to be cooking.
I'd say the twenty fourth. Twenty sixth of November, so strike those meetings.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
So orders again.
The twenty.
The ninth, sometimes it's around the fourth of July.
What's um, Memorial? No, that would be a Wednesday, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, they're usually Monday and Friday holidays.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it looks like.
And then discussion thoughts on posting, what I do is post this on the internet. Deadlines for new applications would be just for that second Wednesday. And then the second meeting, we'd call that as a workshop, and again, you can modify this as you go along, but. I like to post in a year then stay up so people can plan. Um, once you take an application in, you can continue it to the second meeting. But the intake would be once a month. If, if you, you're just looking at this now, so it's, you know, that, it up to but ultimately.
Can we, can we add a little caveat for just like a little um. A little flexibility for people that need to get something in soon that we could replace a workshop or add it on to a meeting with a workshop?
You have that flexibility.
We do have that, okay, yeah.
I think when you, when you post it as a regular meeting, that there's gonna be development applications with a deadline. That's where it's a little more people are gonna count on that, so.
Okay.
That's the part.
Yeah, I thought that to get side visits and.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, you can table an application to the next day, I mean, that's all.
Okay.
That you could. Yes, so then.
What are we motioning? Did we make it? Did we adopt it or?
Oh, I thought you just did. Said you, I make a motion. Oh, maybe you asked for a motion. Yeah, I, I, I. I'll make a motion that we adopt this calendar, uh, for a planning board calendar for twenty twenty five. With, with November twenty second, or twenty six and December twenty fourth. Removed.
Okay, baby.
Second.
This is not on here, but as a result of the little, none of the material for myself, this meeting, is it possible? To have a standard day of the month where if we know that you're gonna wanna do a sidewalk. That it's already set aside that we know, we can let the applicant know, you know, this is when sidewalks occur, if they're requested. Um, something that would accommodate people's schedules and maybe, maybe we can't decide that right now, but I think it would be very helpful. And if they were to date, like, oh, we're gonna do sidewalk on that, and then we, we already kind of know when that would be.
The problem I see in the winter time, the people that work aren't gonna be able to.
Cause the sun, yeah.
I used to do them on Saturday mornings at towns on, in the winter. But I don't know if people want to do that, but I mean, I guess maybe it's something to talk about rather than get a specific answer, but it would be helpful. You could change it according to the season as well.
Yeah.
It's sort of work for everybody in advance.
So, uh, mornings are actually better for me as well. I can leave, not for long, but I can leave. Afternoons are not easy.
Yeah, morning's fine with me, two days a week.
I, I know that Aaron and Greg are both gonna say mornings during the week are probably not good for them at all. Yeah. Yeah, it would be, see, so I feel like in the summer before a planning board meeting is perfect, you go to your site visit and then you come straight here. In the winter, I think it would make most sense for everybody to be able to attend would be most likely a Saturday morning.
So in general, in the winter time where we don't have as much daylight, we're gonna try to schedule something.
Yeah.
Morning, the majority, there may be two who can't, but the majority of people are in the morning, so I can even just share this information with applicants prior. To their submitting an application or, um, and then.
He could have something really cool to do. Or are they in elementary school soon? It, you never know, each season is different. Yeah, you never know.
But almost of my thing.
So that would be.
Ten o'clock on Saturday.
Before the meeting. And then, so that's in the winter time when there's more daylight, you wanna do it for.
That would be my preference. I don't know about you guys.
I would say once it stays light till close to six o'clock.
Yeah. Whatever your pleasure is, I don't, I don't know if um, Aaron and Greg would be available.
What I'm hearing. Uh, time of year, many, three o'clock on day.
Three o'clock the day of the meeting would never work for me. Yeah, kids, school buses, it would probably have to be after like a four forty five. But I'm one person.
So that, that's about, I think that there's a time, way of data, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's the old.
Yeah. Uh, just at any time after, probably five on, five o'clock on. Yeah.
Okay.
So whether, but it was wrong word, time of year, bidding, hour one, day of meeting, I don't do this, yeah, I do this time.
Also, it depends on, uh, how many do we have to look? If it's one, then we can probably get. You get out there, January is, there's only one, still.
Well, if somebody can't make, they can't.
Oh, yeah, everybody.
I'm anticipating the one that we're gonna get. That's gonna have to be.
I, I think that that is super helpful from my perspective and, um, so I can guide applicants, so you all can keep your calendars clear if possible. Um, and then it'll be more of a meeting by meeting depending on what comes in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, are we going to do these site visits prior to accepting it? Cause in some cases, two of these tonight, we'd already accepted it if I remember right.
Well, we don't wanna go see every kid, uh, cause I, I feel like they'd have to come in and present something first. Right?
Previously.
So before they're accepted as complete, but we would know that, cause we'd start reviewing it and we'd be like, we need to see this, we can't. Move forward.
They still have to present it.
But I don't wanna go see everybody's, some of it's pretty straightforward. Yeah, so I think you really don't need to.
Yep.
Yeah.
Structure less than a hundred, be anything that's structured, there's a land zone, maybe it's a threshold. Exactly, that's our primary goal.
It's a good point. Well, we don't get involved in the others anyway.
Okay, fabulous, appreciate.
Yep.
It's good for me, um. Asbills. An asbill is generally, when you reference, again, I saw you nodding, so you must be very familiar with them, but in my mind. You know, depending what the project is, if it's a this big project, they do survey and locate asbilled, you know, and certify it. And, and then also if it's a small project and someone comes in with a red pen and marks it up, so I didn't know if anyone had any issue around that.
So. It should be done before they do the changes.
Their red lines, it's, it's a radical, sorry, but if you change the route line or. I'm sure the elevation, list was wrong. Location, uh, there's a random bit, people, then moving back, I don't know.
Yeah.
The turning things, if they wanna change, the, we didn't agree.
So ultimately, uh, we wanna confirm that they're building what you approved. And if there are changes, that it'd be documented if appropriate or come back to you appropriate.
Yeah, how come he got so upset? The gentleman just seemed not very happy about having to provide that. Apparently, okay, I wasn't sure if there was something. Oh, I was, yes. Yeah.
Well, the other thing I can say is.
Yeah, it's okay.
The other thing is, we're gonna be a lot stricter on. It comes to impervious areas, elevations and things like that. Because we've been bad here.
Well, you look at what's there now, you say, oops.
Didn't know we.
No, that's what.
What's that? What do we approve?
Yes, you did. I just wanted to make sure everyone, cause it, yes. We all understand the purpose and the.
I mean, that should be, isn't that what they're supposed to do? They just don't, and that's why we're asking for the asbills or whatever. What are we calling it? An asbill? Built as?
Built.
Asbill. So. Kipman committing that in the brain here, asbills.
Literally, as it's built. So I have some standard conditions that are on the um, findings and uh, number three. Is that the approval is limited to the proposal as set forth in the application and supporting documents, except as modified by specific, specific conditions. Adopted by the planning board and granting a permit. Any variations from the application or conditions of approval are subject to prior review. And approval by the planning board or code enforcement officer. So this is putting them on notice, you build what you got approved for or.
What do you got there?
This is, um, they were standard, so one of the notes here was I wanted to check with you on the standard conditions that I proposed, so that's one. Um, and then that's of the five, that was number three. I'll pass this to you, and then number five says, once construction is complete. I'll pass this to you, and then number five says, once construction is complete, the committee shall notify the CEO that all requirements and conditions of approval have been met. And make sure that.
That's not already in our ordinance?
I don't know. But I like to put. I'll call.
Like came on winter, if it's not already listed, that's nice.
Yeah, but if you don't bring it up when you're approving it.
Yeah.
So I didn't read through the whole.
Yeah, I seen that.
I'd like to see.
Well, there may be instances like, so you're saying and often will the plant, the CEO is gonna approve this planting plan. So if a species has changed or instead of putting on one tree of this diameter, we're gonna put two of smaller diameter like. I don't, like, if you're handing that to the CEO and maybe may might have to do this in the future, but you have in the past. If it's something that you're saying he's gonna approve this, the detail of it, then he would approve. Any minor amendments to it, unless that's not your intention, then we just need to be careful moving forward.
Well, if they they built the. Uh and they build it higher than the concrete. But they didn't put it where they said they were gonna put it, located mainly around. They didn't put it relative to the water. And straight forward, we looked at like. That any one of them could be. In a position not like what they said.
The po- the problem is. It doesn't get checked. We don't check, I don't know.
Well, the reason that they're gonna be required to check in when it's completed is they're gonna have to check in and say, hey, everything's, you know, as. We will require them to when we start having these conditions tied to it. It's a culture that you have to build as well, so they know they're not done yet. We don't issue certificates of occupancies, so normally you can tie it to that.
Yeah, we don't.
Let's say they do build it about a foot higher than. They aren't gonna come back and tell you that unless we require it, first sign an apartment, and even then, I don't know who goes to.
Well, so those structures are, um there's a third party inspector, Mark does not inspect the actual construction. So there's a third party inspector who puts reports back to Mark in writing, saying. That it was built according to the plan, so they're putting their literature online, and I I I say that, but I'm not sure what the requirement is.
Do they measure height?
I believe so.
Okay, so it does say in our, on page sixty six, the code enforcement officer shall conduct onsite inspections. To ensure compliance with all applicable laws and conditions attached to permit approvals. The code enforcement officer shall also investigate all complaints of alleged violations. And also under A, that he is to enforce the provisions of the ordinance. If there's any violations. Blah 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 blah, he makes all the notices and that sort of thing.
So.
So I will amend a condition. Basically state what we're saying, but to reference some specific language in there.
Yeah, and there's also legal actions here too.
On the problem. Lot we got down there that I've been involved in. A third party inspector should. Look at all that stuff.
The code enforcement officer.
It they wouldn't um. Be looking at impervious area, they'd be looking at the structure.
Height, distance from the water.
Well, they have to build it according to what was approved in the building permit.
I know that, but who checks that? You you said that there's a third party that has to prove that.
I I wanna talk to Mark about what the intent is, is for they, the third party. Once the building permits issued, when they're complete, they submit documentation to Mark confirming that.
I'd like to know what it is they confirm. I think they confirm building codes, things like that. I don't think they look at.
Yeah, they don't do shoreline.
Yeah, third party inspector, but they were all focused on. Meeting environmental. Regulatory requirements, so in this case, I would think a third party inspector would be able to make sure that the. The uh the berm has been installed correctly, that the falls weren't exposed to the lake, those types of things versus.
But this would be a building.
This is just building.
I don't think.
Yeah, we have third party for for the structures.
Yeah.
I need to find out more about that. Is that the one that there was um? You saw cement bags or something? All right. All right, so we use as an example to see what the process is. I just know that. There is one and it's, I'm sitting is it's for. Structures or codes around structures. Which would include height and footprint, but it would not include shoreline provisions like coverage and drainage and so. Let me see, let me get more information for for that.
There is, there is a point.
Access by any by protective people getting panels to shut off power. The fire hooking of garage, the dash. A breather, shooting attached to.
Different times.
Uh so I got a different.
Did they come and do inspections during construction or did they come up to conclusion and just do a check?
Who did consult.
Well, the bill, the builder has to, when they're building, they they get a building comment from Mark.
Right.
Right, it has the the details, the plans.
Yep.
And this is the building height, so they have to build according to, and he usually puts a standard condition. Yeah, so they just, I see, I see what you're saying. I'll I'll find out more.
And so what we're doing.
I I like that idea. I don't like the idea, and I don't know if anybody was headed towards this idea of requiring. A final inspection like. Like how you uh what's that called the? Yeah, that's.
Some banks require it.
A what?
Certificate of occupancy.
They don't do that here, I don't think. They did that where I used to live and it was, it became very, it became. So awfully controlling to close on houses and the stress of it and everything is. Very, very much, I feel like people shouldn't be punished for the handful of bad eggs that you might get, and I always like to assume people are honest and. Tell the truth, and if they don't, you report them, but I like the idea of an asbill, just as a final. Giving it back, maybe it would make somebody think, if they know they have to hand in the final plan. Ooh, if we are gonna make a change, they're gonna see this at the end, so it would prevent that from happening without being. You know, going in and inspecting every little thing and measuring, I don't like that idea personally, but I like the idea of the the asbill report. As a preventative option. Yeah, it's their house, though, I mean, you can get it your own inspector if you're worried about your house being safe. I did that.
The fire department come in and check the.
You don't have to, though.
You don't have to be in now.
Electric, you don't have to. Well, I mean, listen, if you're, when we bought our house, it wasn't required to have a building inspection. I got one anyway. You know, I got my well checked and I.
Does I I just know that does fire department require? You to close, in order to close on a house.
No.
You do not have to have by smoke detectors.
No.
Oh, my God, that's stoic.
Well, you know, it's if you don't have fire detectors. Survival of the fittest, I don't know.
Commercial and multifamily.
Yeah, yeah. But like, if you've just, yeah.
People buying decide they want. They want. So it is monitor.
Yeah, some of that depends if the bankers are firing. The bank may require. Much more than. The challenge.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Um, one is just a fact that eventually unless opposed to it, is that at at one point I was putting suggested motions. In writing, um because I know it can be awkward to try to capture everything. So this is something that I is in my office, that it's all of the conditions for um condition use permit that you. That you have to find that the application needs, so I believe that at some point that board members must have had. A laminated sheet to use at the meeting, uh somewhere along the line, I got the impression that was the case.
That I was gonna ask about, that's the one that Greg was checking off last last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't it that he was going through?
Not this little one, but those are the criteria.
Isn't that the criteria that you should be looking at for everything?
And they're referenced in the findings. Well, it's in the, I can, it's in the ordinance and it's in the draft findings. So this was a tool that was used previously, and the reason why I'm bringing it out is because. Um, would it be helpful for me to put? Previously, we looked at different things like, so Greg created that document tonight that's, you know, we talked about cycling regulations and how to approach. Um using the ordinance, and we did talk about that previously. Um and I had a document. My question is this. Would it be helpful for me to put something in writing that included motions to make, like how to make a motion completeness?
Yeah.
Sample language you could fill in the um. The case number, name, so like something you can have if you're gonna make a motion.
But I'd like that checklist laminated. That we should be looking at with every approval. They don't, may not all apply, but as we're going through the.
Yeah.
Application, jobs are mine, don't forget about this.
I I can do that, however, that the finding. If if it doesn't, if it's not that for you, then I need to change it because it's supposed to say. Uh here's the application, here's the property, here's what they wanna do, the board can review it because of this section of the ordinance gives them permission. And um they have to meet these criteria, and here's how they do or don't, and it's in the the document should call out. All the criteria they have to meet, these included.
Okay.
And then when you.
We wouldn't be looking at all of that, we'd be going to the ones.
It's in the fi- draft findings.
Yeah, so, so whenever we make a decision. We should be relying on legal findings in fact. And so if you look, so so Dawn had done a good job and drafted one of three projects that we had tonight.
Yeah.
If you flip to the back, it's got all the crit- it's got fourteen criteria there.
Oh, it does.
Those are, that's what this.
That's what I was talking.
So I think as long as we've got those. At the same time, we've got the packet, we can be reviewing the pack. Fact and figuring out if we agree with it or not.
Yeah. So what I would I'll do separately is instead of putting suggested motions in the findings. I'll have some standard sample motions that you could use, and then you reference the findings. But you wanna make sure that you as individuals review the findings and that you agree with them. So I'm putting down what I believe to be the case, so it does or doesn't, and then.
Put all of them in there.
Yes, and then during the course of your process, you may find. It to be different, and so then you just say what the changes are gonna be and I'm gonna change it.
Hey, guys, my battery's dying, so are we ending the recorded meeting part portion of the evening? Okay.
I I just wanna, you can.